All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the City Council workshop to order for Tuesday, September 19, 2017. Let the record show that the entire council is present. And with that, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna skip to item number two, DS-17-101. And I'm gonna give Mrs. Anderson an opportunity to come on up first, so you don't have to wait here all night. So, Mrs. Anderson, you are up.
Hey, good evening, Council, Mayor, city staff. Can you hear me? Is it working? Okay. I'm here to present to you the investment report for the quarter ended June 30. This is the next to the last quarter before your fiscal year ends. They switched it up on you. We're doing the report first. Before we get started on the report, I just thought I had laid at your desks our economic report. We have a market outlook that we produce once a month, right after the payroll numbers come out. Just a little overview, everything's getting a little weaker. We've had a slowdown in employment. We've had a slowdown in housing and production. Even though the consumer still seems to be very confident, they haven't been spending. And then, the second piece that I put out is a special report about the economics behind things like hurricanes and natural disasters. Because what you're going to see is with these upcoming market reports, there's been a lot of upheaval in the system. So, we're gonna see a lot of distortion in the numbers over the next several months. Things from employment to production to, obviously, rebuilding of homes. So, suddenly, all of these consumers that have been hoarding their cash and not spending are going to be forced into spending for those items that are non-discretionary. As we discussed today in the Investment Committee meeting at length, you might see a bubble in spending, as people do have to replenish and repurpose what their places where they live, and homes, and cars, and that sort of thing. But if it's not sustainable, it's really not helping the economy in the long run. So, hopefully, these two pieces will give you some overview of what we're thinking is going on in the economy. Now, for your portfolio, you can see that the change between March and June is about 5.3 million down. That's very normal, because your spending funds, as you get further and further into your fiscal year, before you get the influx, inflow of property tax revenues, you start to see this depletion. And you'll get the closest to zero that your portfolio will ever get by the time you hit December. And then, you'll start to see a replenishment through property taxes. So, spending 5.3 million is pretty much in line with what we would expect. Your average rate of return actually went over 1 percent. It's been 100 years since we've been over 1 percent, I think. We're up to 107. Just to put that into perspective, last quarter at this time, you were at 84 basis points. A year ago, you were at 53. So, we're twice as much. Now, some of that has been the Fed increases that have occurred. We had one in December, one in March. With this quarter, we didn't have any Fed increases. So, a pickup of 23 basis points is just natural improvement in the portfolio. Some of the things that have happened in your portfolio is you've taken advantage of that NextBank product that I talked to you about. It's a money market fund, fully collateralized. You can withdraw as you need money to pay your bills. It pays 146, which is about 50 basis points higher than the text pool rate. So, it makes sense to use that sort of a vehicle. We don't want to put too much there and have too many of your eggs in the basket, even though it's safe. But we're comfortable, right now, you have about 20 million there, and I think that's a good level. And earning that much more over text pool makes a lot of sense. On page two, the chart that I always point your attention to is the upper left-hand column. We had a long discussion today in the Investment Committee meeting about this. That red line at the bottom, that's where we were on the yield curve one year ago. So, you can see how much lower interest rates in the whole curve was a year ago. What we saw last quarter is the green line. That is what we want to see over the long term, where you have a yield curve that's upward sloping. And the more upward sloping, as long as it's not too steep, is good. That says that the economy is growing, it's healthy. And so, obviously, that's the curve that we want to see the economy achieving. What we've seen over this last quarter, however, is a flattening. It's still higher interest rates on the short end, which is primarily where you invest. But when you've got a flat yield curve, it insinuates to the market that the market could go up, or interest rates could go up or down. One of the things that we've mainly seen to cause this interest rate to flatten out, we've had a lot of upheaval in the market. You've got North Korea. We also had the debt ceiling that we finally got pushed down the road to December again. But when there's a lot of upheaval in the market, you've got an influx of those investors who are afraid of the market. So, they're seeking a safe harbor, and the U.S. Treasury is the safe harbor. So, as all of those investors come in, you see yield curves start to flatten out. The yields actually go down when you see a lot of influx of money into that market. So, hopefully, we'll get all of this out of our system, plus now the new hurricane situation going on. And ultimately, we want to see that upward sloping yield curve. On page three, this is your investment program, the whole portfolio. Everything above that blank row, again, is your cash position. You're very heavy in cash normally. I like to see about a 15 percent, but there's a reason that it's heavy in cash. Your NextBank rate right now is 146. I've already mentioned that. You've got other money market accounts that are at 121. You've still got text pool, it's about a 1 percent. I told the Investment Committee today that I was out yesterday looking for CD rates. For one year, I was getting about the same rate that you were getting in the NextBank overnight rate. So, it kind of doesn't make sense to stick it out longer term when you can get that same rate overnight. Now, the strategy of our discipline is to keep a maturity ladder in place. Worst-case scenario, if you see interest rates start to go down, you've got some investments that are holding the rate up. So, we like to keep a balance. But right now, with the rate we're getting in NextBank, I think it makes sense to go there. On page four, the most important graph, I think, to focus on here is the pie chart. Just to give you a comparative, last quarter, your CDs and securities were at 34 percent. They're now at 45 percent. That's a good place for the securities to be. The pools and money market accounts have declined. They were 52 percent of your allocation. They're now 42 percent. And the demand accounts, which are the lowest yielding investments, are at 13 percent, as opposed to 14 percent last quarter. So, we're making the pie allocations, I think, a little bit more comfortable for the portfolio overall. Page five, this shows primarily the purchases and the maturities or sales. Under the purchases side, we had actually five, four transactions that took place this quarter. We purchased four different CDs, two of them at about a 5 million level, two of them at about a 2 to 2.5 million level. All of them were at very good rates. Those were really, for the most part, just taking investments that had matured and reallocating them back into the maturity ladder that we've built. And I think the final page I'll focus you on is page seven. This is the allocation to the different funds that you have in your portfolio. The last five funds are very small, so all of that is in cash. The portfolio that we use the laddering strategy primarily in is that pooled investments. And you can see all of those staggered maturities that we've got put your position in a very good shape. We like to have those maturities, because you never know for certain what's going to happen with the interest rate environment. So, we're balancing. We've got some laddered out, and we've got some short-term to protect your portfolio either way. If you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them.
Questions? All right. Well, thank you. You're done. All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on, Mr. Locke. You're still up. Okay, well, I think we got, let's see. We're gonna have to do DS-17-100. Discuss agenda items for regular City Council meeting for September 26, 2017. And with that, it's our minutes, MN-17-021. Consider minutes on special City Council meeting of September 5, 2017. Any questions or comments on those? None. MN-17-022. Consider minutes at regular City Council meeting of September 12, 2017. Any comments or questions on those? All right, now, we're going to resolutions. RS-17-094. Consider memorandum resolution to approve the City of Colleen's investment policy. Mr. Locke.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Texas Government Code 2256 is commonly referred to as the Public Funds Investment Act. It governs the investment of funds in the state. And it also establishes the parameters that municipalities must follow in investing those municipal, in those government funds. Some of those parameters include the adoption of an investment policy. And that investment policy must be reviewed and updated and approved by City Council on an annual basis. And that's what we're doing this evening. It also requires the designation of investment officers. And for the city, that is the Director of Finance and the Assistant Director of Finance. And it imposes training requirements for those investment officers. It provides for the authorized investments that the city is able to invest in. And it defines the investment objectives and the priorities of the investment objectives. And those priorities in order are preservation and safety of principal, liquidity, and yield. Due to some legislative changes, the investment policy needs to be updated to reflect the legislative changes. House Bill 1003 clarified that interest-bearing bank deposits are allowed. So, there will be some changes that you'll see that we'll cover a little later that pertain to that. House Bill 1701 amended the investment policy certification requirement. And that certification requirement is that an entity that the city is going to do business with completes a certification that they have received, read, and understand the requirements of the imposed by the city's investment policy. What the legislative changes, what the legislative changes were, is it removed the requirements for brokers and dealers to sign the certification. And only the local government investment pools and the discretionary investment management firms are required to sign the policy certification. Our agreement with Valley View is a non-discretionary investment management firm, so that is not covered through this. What a discretionary investment management firm is, is a firm that has full control over the government's portfolio, and they do not need the government's permission to make any sorts of trades. And that's not the agreement that we have with Valley View. The final House bill that had an impact on investment policy is 2928. And this just clarified that securities of the Federal Home Loan Bank are unauthorized Now, to just go through the significant changes that are present in the investment policy. Page five of the policy in Section Four, under Responsibility and Control, is changed to only allow investment officers to buy, sell, and trade investments. And this is more of a clarification. The city charter requires the city manager to be a signatory on all account transactions, and that doesn't change that. The city manager isn't an investment officer, so the policy was just clarified that the city manager doesn't also buy and sell investments. On page seven, Section Six, under Annual Report, the act requires an annual report to be submitted to the governing body. And policy was added to clarify that that annual report would be included with the fourth-quarter Page seven, Section Seven, Subparagraph One, House Bill 2928 clarified that the Federal Home Loan Bank is allowable as an agency of the United States to be invested in. And the policy was updated to reflect that. On page eight, Section Seven, Subparagraph Eight, new SEC requirements require that money market mutual funds net assets be quoted to four digits. So, our investment policy was updated from two to four digits to meet the SEC requirement.
Mayor, I've got a question.
Mr. Rivera.
Let me go back to HB-2928, clear something out for me. You said HB-2928 allow bank to be considered as an investment, or to do, the agency be considered to do an investment, as a bank per se?
The Federal Home Loan Bank. Yes, sir. There was a, and it's always been the practice that it was an allowable investment. And the Attorney General recently issued an opinion on a matter that brought that into some confusion surrounding whether or not it was allowable an investment. And so, what the legislature did is changed the law to explicitly read that the Federal Home Loan Bank is an allowable investment.
Thank you, sir. Just want to clear that out. I'm sorry, but that's the man.
Okay, on page 10, Section Eight, under Broker Dealers and Approved List, this deals with the requirement that brokers and dealers do not have to sign the city's investment policy certification. So, the language was updated to reflect that. Also on page 10, under Investment Policy Certification, the requirement that government investment pools and discretionary investment management firms complete the certification was added, so that those entities complete the certification form. All other changes were considered grammar or clerical in nature and did not impact the investment policy. So, it's staff's recommendation that City Council approve the revised investment policy. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Oakley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Locke, who are the federal home loan banks? I mean, a common generic name?
The Federal Home Loan Bank is typically where we receive our, or collateral on our investments through, a lot of times. They underwrite the collateral for the city's investment. So, any investment that the city has has to be collateralized. Our policy states at 102 percent, so that if something were to happen to the investment, we would still be able to get the value of the investment back. And that's typically what we use the Federal Home Loan Bank for. They also issue securities. And if, in the event that they did, then we could purchase a security of theirs if the city wished to.
And this is not a bank that an average person can go and open an account with, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Mrs. Fleming.
I wanted to add to what Councilman Oakley said. Is this like a protection for the investments?
Yes, yes, ma'am. That's what the collateral is.
Okay, there's a protection for us. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera.
Do they have a ceiling? Do they protect if something happened to their money?
Under the, under state law, we, our investments have to be, the investments and the interest, accrued interest must be collateralized. So, if something were to happen to the bank that we have a CD with, then it's either covered through FDIC.
Yeah, that I understand, but they don't have a ceiling. They say, there's so much you can invest, and after that, we're not responsible for it if you lose your money?
No, sir.
Okay, it's just like FDIC?
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Fleming?
No, we're saying there's no limit amount. It can go all the way up to just the amount, and they will still protect us, no matter what the amount is?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, that's awesome. That's wonderful.
All right. Anybody else? That's it? RS-17-095. Consider memorandum resolution approving the investment report for the quarter ending June 30, 2017. Mrs. Anderson? Who's on that one?
Ms. Snitzer.
Oh. It's on my list. RS-17-096. I'm sorry. I'm reading down my list, okay?
Edit the leave, sir.
Consider memorandum resolution approving an interlock agreement with Educational Service Center Region 19 Allied States Cooperation. That's you, Mr. Locke, again.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This resolution is requesting the council's approval to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Education Service Center Region 19 Allied States Cooperative. This cooperative is based out of El Paso, Texas. It provide, sorry, it provides an organizational and administrative structure for bidding and procurement of goods and services. And the co-op is able to recognize substantial savings due to the large number of volume of transactions that they handle. Local government code permits local governments to participate in cooperative purchasing. And purchases made through an interlocal agreement satisfy the legal requirements of competitive bidding. There is no financial impact to joining the co-op. Membership is free. And Public Works has identified a competitive contractor on this particular co-op. And you'll hear from them a little later this evening on a water main rehabilitation project. So, it would, joining the co-op would help Public Works in that endeavor. And it'll also open it up for all city departments in the future to look at this co-op when looking to procure goods and services. Staff recommends that City Council authorize the interlocal agreement with the cooperative. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, ma'am.
Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a broad spectrum. Can you give us some other, what can we use it to, for vehicles, for supplies, for what?
It's for any goods and services that the, that the cooperative offers. I mean, they offer a lot of, a lot of items, a lot of items that the city wouldn't even use. They do have some vehicles on there, like a lot of cooperatives do. And they have contractors as well, which is what Public Works is interested in, that do water main rehabilitation. And so, that's an example of the service that you can procure from there. Just about any, the city is members of multiple cooperatives. So, this will just add another cooperative that staff can look at and compare the prices between all the cooperatives and find the best price for the city.
Mrs. King?
I think it's a win-win. It's just free, and it's just another option. So, I think it's a great idea to bring that to board. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Moving on. RS-17-097. Consider memorandum resolution authorizing the award of construction contract with Murphy Pipeline Contractors, Inc., to rehabilitate 11,535 feet of water drain main. Mr. Olson, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Locke mentioned previously, this is a contractor, Murphy Pipeline Company, that is a member of the previous buy board that we referenced. The particular contract in this case, our 2012 Water and Wastewater Master Plan calls for the rehabilitation of approximately 11,500 linear feet of water main along Veterans Memorial Boulevard. That particularly comes between that intersection with College Street and 38th Street. We have significant congestion in this area with businesses, high traffic on the roadway, and just a high-traffic area in general. So, what we've opted to do here is use a pre-chlorinated pipe bursting method for this rehabilitation. What that really means is that as the pipe goes into the ground, it is ready to use in a much quicker fashion than other methods through traditional construction or traditional pipe bursting. Murphy Pipeline Contractors submitted their proposal to the purchasing co-op in the amount They've done similar work in the U.S. This is a relatively new technology, but they've done similar work elsewhere to the tune of about 75,000 linear feet of pipe across the United States. And funding for this project is available in the Water and Sewer Bond. What you would see here is some typical construction. You're not going to see a lot of disturbance linear along an open trench on a road. Our current waterline rehab project is Phase One along Ransier, near Ransier and 10th Street. And with that, what you saw was an open-cut trench. Here, what you would see is a single trench, a single pit that would be dug. The pipe would burst through the existing pipe, and then you would have a single dig to connect services along the way. What we look at here is about an eight-hour window where a business may be out of service versus the other traditional way. It could be a couple of, couple of three days that they're out of service at that point. We looked at several alternatives when we were considering this rehab phase. The first piece here was we could hire an engineer, design, and bid out the replacement of these water mains, similar to what we did with our Phase One. Due to the heavy congestion, though, along VMB, we determined that this approach would be more costly and very difficult to accomplish. We could delay this rehabilitation. That's gonna incur, cause us to incur additional water loss. We could rehabilitate in a different area of town. There are other areas that call for rehabilitation. But we feel that this is a high-priority area, and it's the second-highest on the water main prioritization process. The final option there was to negotiate a contract with Murphy Pipeline Contractors for the pre-chlorinated pipe bursting method. Staff is recommending we negotiate that contract and use the Allied States, R19, purchasing co-op to secure services for Murphy Pipeline Contractors in the amount of And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes, a bad question. Mr. Olson, all these pipelines, when you insert those, and you seem to be doing them in the most needed areas, what is the life expectancy of these pipes? Just hypothetically.
A PVC main that's going in the ground now is, has got a 30-plus-year life expectancy. When you look at what was done years back, you had clay pipes, you had some asbestos concrete pipes. Those had a much shorter duration. And a lot of that is the type of things that we're replacing now.
So, when you sign the contract with Murphy, is that Murphy, or did I?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, when you sign the contract with Murphy, in your contract, is it saying that it's probably a 30-year lifespan, or anything like that within the contract, though?
No, ma'am. The contract's not gonna specify the lifespan of the pipe. What the contract will specify is the warranty period with which the contractor warranties that work. And in this case, the City of Colleen requires a one-year warranty period after the acceptance for workmanship and materials.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. King.
I like this idea, because that's where we deal with these streets. And the location, just the location, so we can, I think it's, I think it's, we need to, we need to, I don't know.
Mr. Oakley.
Yes. Hey, Mr. Olson, last year, we experienced like three or four pipes bursting, about this time last year. So, is this gonna, is this, is this gonna, I guess, relieve, leave whatever pressure or anything? Or was it in the, this work is gonna be done within those areas where we experienced those bursts?
There are several breaks that have occurred in this area. I don't have the specific number right off the top of my head, but this is a problem area. And we expect to see a reduction in main breaks as a result of this project.
Because I, yeah, because I remember last year, probably around Thanksgiving. It was like, it was like three or four.
Correct. Some of those were, were in this area along VMB.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this totally different from what we were briefed on last month in the water about a method of pipe bursting and replacement?
This is a different project than you were briefed on previously.
There's a different method?
It's a different method. This is, so, there's a traditional pipe bursting method. That means that it's just pulling a new pipe through the old pipe. That means that it's just pulling a new pipe through the old pipe. This method combines pipe bursting with pre-chlorination, which means that that line is ready to go when it's in the ground. Typically, with a waterline, you have to go through a testing process where you get bacteria samples and make sure your chlorine residuals are adequate to bring that line on...online. With this method, you'll pull it into the ground, hook the new services up, and it's ready to go.
Hmm.
Close to cost. Is that...
Cost differential between...
If you look at what we did with our original waterline rehab, we were at approximately $100 per linear foot. And you can see if we apply that same $100 per linear foot here, we're pretty close cost-wise. What you could see is this area, given the congestion, we would probably see a little bit higher cost just due to the conditions along Veterans Memorial than that $100. But it's comfortable.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Just a comment. I think I've brought this up before. I really would like us to start using those capital improvement signs, putting those up on those two-by-fours like Harker Heights does. I think it would really go a long ways to showing the citizens, especially the north part of town, to where they really feel that they're being neglecting. So, of course, they're sending the work being done, but if we're able to find the funding and put those signs up, especially for a major project like that, I think it'd go a long ways.
Definitely. We'll discuss your comments further with the city manager and take that in consideration. Appreciate it.
All right. Anybody else? Mr. Oakley?
Last, Mr. Olson. With this method, does this alleviate altogether the boil-water notices that accompany...
Yes.
It alleviates them?
Yes. And barring any unforeseen circumstances, it would alleviate boil-water notice. Obviously, if there's something out of the ordinary, then it's still a possibility.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're done on that one. RS-17-098. Consider memorandum resolution authorizing the procurement of six vehicles for the Water and Sewer Division. Mr. Tidlocke, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The Water and Sewer Divisions are in need of replacing six of their vehicles. One was actually totaled out in 2016. The other five are incurring increased repair costs and are overdue for replacement. Replacement of these units will ensure efficient maintenance of the city's infrastructure and achieve operating at the least cost of ownership. Cobble Country Chevrolet would supply the four one-ton service trucks and a mid-sized SUV utilizing buy-board cooperative pricing for a total of $155,700. Houston Freightliner would supply the large sewer cleaning truck utilizing HGAC buy cooperative pricing for $371,120. Total cost of the six vehicles would be $526,000...I'm sorry, $526,820. Funds are available in the Water and Sewer Divisional accounts totaling $557,000. This is a photo of the large sewer cleaning truck and also what the four one-tons would look like. Staff recommends procurement of the six vehicles, and I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
All right. Questions? Mr. Olson?
I wanted to make a comment, even though I am seven days late on making this comment.
Uh-oh.
There was a comment made at our public hearing on the budget last week to the effect that I think a person stood up and said they only wanted to pay for water. They didn't want to pay for equipment. They did not want to pay for support services and other things that were called out in the budget. And I just wanted...I just want to say, in order to provide water to every home and every business in this city, we need to have equipment, and we need to have people, and we need to have administrative support to deliver what is our primary mission, which is delivering water. But all of those are support efforts to allow us to deliver the water. So these purchases of equipment and other services to support that effort are absolutely vital.
Yeah. Well said. Real...
Wish I'd have said it seven days ago.
Yeah. Well, the outcome was still good, so...all right. Anybody else? Any other questions? Well, look at that. You're done. Thank you. RS-17-099. Consider memorandum resolution authorizing repairs, resurfacing of the transfer station tipping floor. Is that what it is? Tipping floor by Protective Polymer Solutions. Mr. Olson?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. We'll start this off by describing what the tipping floor is. It's the initial floor where waste is dumped after it leaves the garbage truck. That floor has a coating on it that prevents any infiltration of chemicals or water or other things that may be contaminated into the concrete. And it protects the...that coating protects the rubber...solid rubber tires and the rubber squeegee blades that we have to prevent any fires within this transfer station as we operate. The City of Colleen Transfer Station Tiffin Floor was last replaced in 2011 with Emery 400 topping. At that time, we split the floor into two different types of topping. One was a cheaper Emery 400 topping. The other side was a...the topping we're going with here. And what we found over that course was that the cheaper topping actually did not provide the savings that we anticipated, and it wore out at an accelerated rate. The current state of deterioration on the floor causes excess wear and tear on the solid rubber tires and the rubber squeegee that are on our wheel loaders. And as those tires wear out, they're very expensive. If you look back over the past five years, we've spent approximately $140,000 on replacement of those tires and squeegees, where we probably should have spent more around the range of The estimated cost of this floor was not in the original budget. However, due to savings and salary lag, we've been able to come up with that cost at the end of our fiscal year. What you see here is a comparison of the tires and the types of tires that you have operating on that tipping floor. On the left-hand side is a brand-new set. Those are solid rubber tires, and they wear down over time. Again, those solid rubber tires prevent any metal-on-metal, and which would cause a spark and cause a fire within the transfer station. Those replacement tires cost approximately $20,000 apiece.
Mrs. King's got a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a four-and-after picture?
Yes.
Five years, ten years?
Given that we had $140,000, and we have four tires there, we're looking probably a span of four years? Okay. My apologies. They should last 12 months, and they're lasting about 50% of that time at six to six and a half months. What you see here is a different comparison of what the floor...the left-hand side is what the floor looks like currently. Our right-hand side is what we plan for it to look like as soon as these repairs are done. You can see it's very abrasive on that left-hand side, and it's much more smooth surface on the right. What we see here is the type of flooring that's proposed on our right-hand side. And on the left-hand side, that is our current transfer station. Staff is recommending that city council award the contract to Protective Polymer Solutions to replace this floor. And again, that is in the amount of $120,000...$120,520. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Olson, in...also included with that surface type rate on the left side, does that chemical composition that's in the...inside of the trucks themselves have any...have any bearing on the wear and tear of those tires, breaking down the rubber?
Hey...
I know you're not a chemist.
I'm sure that there is some bearing on it. You know, I'm not a chemistry specialist by any means, but to say there's none would probably be a lie. But the main driver of the wear and tear is that rough abrasive surface.
Thank you.
Mr. Rivera?
Just got a small question. It's just an observation more than anything else. That's the floor. That's the way the floor is going to be inside. It does crack. They're going to be filled in, because let me explain to you why. There's a lot of glass get between there. If you don't utilize the place, you won't even think about it. But when you utilize the place and you bring your vehicle in there, and those tires are liable to get some of those glass, I don't know if that glass is going to be in between. I know I use it almost every other month, so...
Right.
I'm very careful, but I don't care how careful I am. I end up in a pile of glass anyway.
That's another reason why you see a solid rubber tire rather than a pneumatic rubber tire. That solid rubber prevents any kind of damage to the tire when you do have sharp objects that stab into it or end up in that tire.
And by the way, I need to recognize the people that work there. They're doing fantastic job. Not a good job, but a fantastic job.
Well, I'd love to be able to take credit for it, but we've got a group of people, and they do a great job.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Thank you.
RS-17-100. Consider memorandum resolution accepting Texas.TXDOT Routine Airport Maintenance Program, RAMP, grants for the Colleen-Ford Hood Regional Airport and Skylark Field. Mr. Van Valkenburg, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager, and City Attorney. This is an annual program we bring back to you. Texas Aviation Department works directly with airports in the state to assist them keeping up the FAA safety standards and ensure that vital aviation links to all parts of Texas are maintained. Texas can provide up to $50,000 per airport each year for airport maintenance and some minor capital funding programs on a 50/50 match basis. Utilization, to give you an example, the type of things we use at our airport: light bulbs for runways and taxiways, herbicides and pesticides, crack sealant rubber removal to rejuvenate our pavements, airport failed paint for runway, taxiways, and ramps, security and access control and maintenance. And at Skylark, we also use these for fuel system repairs and support, T-hanger maintenance and repair, amongst other things. Our recommendation to you is to approve the Texas Ramp Grants for the Colleen-Ford Hood Regional Airport and Skylark Field, and authorize our city manager to execute that agreement as accepted by the city and any all amendments of the grants within the amount set by state and local law. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Van Valkenburg? No? You're good. Mr. Gilpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Funds are available for the match.
That's correct. They're budgeted this year.
And FY '18 or '17?
Both.
And both?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Got money. All right. You got some? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Van Valkenburg.
Thank you, sir.
All right. RS-17...oh, you still got one more. I'm sorry. I was wondering why you're still there. So wait a minute.
I'd love it up here, sir.
RS-17-101. Consider memorandum resolution approving a lease agreement with David Gosnell, DBA Diamond Star Aviation at Skylark Field. Mr. Van Valkenburg?
Thank you again, sir. We have a vacancy coming up with Genesis Aviation notifying us of their intent not to renew their lease. Hence, Mr. Gosnell was joining on the spot, and we have liked to execute a lease agreement with David Gosnell, DBA Diamond Star Aviation. He will conduct aviation business activities as a limited fixed base operator, providing customer aircraft storage. And the term of the lease will be for three years, beginning October 1st, 2017. We considered several or a couple of alternatives. One was to leave the hangar vacant while we continue to solicit for aviation businesses or to proceed with this agreement with Mr. Gosnell. We recommended and followed through with the alternative to proceed with the lease with Mr. Gosnell. The terms and conditions are at market rate, and the services expected are appropriate and commensurate with the airport master plan. And also, the further delays in locating a tenant executing a lease would result in a loss of revenue from the airfield. Thus, we recommend city council approve the lease agreement with Mr. Gosnell and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Also, that the city manager be authorized to execute all lease addendums and any other lease actions, including termination as necessary. I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions? All right. Now...thank you. RS-17-102. Consider memorandum resolution awarding bid number 17-20 to Print and Finishing Solution for the lease of a printing press for the print shop. Mrs. Shine, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you all are aware, I assumed the responsibility for printing services under the Department of Communications last November, and it became apparent very quickly that there was a deficiency in the department, and we are here to address that tonight. We are in need of replacement of our two-color printing press. We do full-service printing services in-house, and our printing press, the two-color offset press, which is responsible for most of our production, has reached...has surpassed its useful life. And we are now experiencing a tremendous amount of trouble with it, so we are here tonight asking for your approval. This is for next fiscal year. The budget...the funds were allocated in the budget you adopted this evening. So again, it's essential to our internal press operations, and it supports all departments. It is responsible for 957 work orders or 3.76 million pieces of collateral. So that's every business card, every letterhead, every paper, everything. And it's experiencing now significant downtime and increasing repair costs, and complete failure is imminent. It's a matter of time. So we considered some alternatives, and one would be to not replace the two-color printing press. That just means that we would incur additional repair costs and increase downtime, and it would lower our production capabilities and the quality of the work we produce in-house. And eventually, as I stated before, this...it will be complete failure of the equipment. So then, we could consider discontinuing the two-color printing press operation, but as you saw, 3.76 million pieces of collateral is a pretty important service that we're providing to all the departments from within. And we would be subjected to outsourcing, which would then in turn produce commercial rates and printing time, slowing our production capabilities to the departments. So the recommendation that we have for you this evening would be to replace the two-color printing press. We went out for bid, and the lowest bidder was a company called, of course, it's on the next page, Print and Finishing Solutions. And they gave us a lease purchase price of $83,969.40. And it would be structured payments over the next five fiscal years, again, beginning in 2018 fiscal year. And the result would be improved reliability, quality, and quantity that it would be capable of producing. So our recommendation is to award the competitive bid 17-20 for the replacement of the printing press effective October 1st, 2017, and have the city manager execute the contract for the 60-month lease. And funding was made available in the budget that you adopted this evening. Any questions?
Mrs. Fleming?
Where is this company located that you are leased with?
I can tell you. There were only two companies that have this particular press, and this company is in California.
California?
Mm-hmm.
And they were the lowest bid?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Johnson?
Lowest bid or best bid?
Lowest. It was the same piece of equipment. We specked out a very specific piece of equipment, and they were the two response...one of two responsible bidders, and they were the lower of the two.
Here's a concern to the city manager, just my concern. For the last year and a half while I've been on council, it seems as though we...there's always lowest bid recommendation. And if we can find a better product, even if it costs a little bit more, I feel more comfortable with that. So it's just a concern.
So what you're...let's make sure I understand what you're saying. We should be looking at not just the purchase price, but the total lifecycle cost of the pieces that we buy?
Yes.
I think that's a good...I think that's a good suggestion, and we certainly do need to be looking at that on our vehicles, for example, and other large pieces. And sometimes it's hard to...sometimes it's hard to look five or 10 years into the future and look at total cost operations, but I think that is a good comparison to make before we make a decision. And we may still go with the lowest bid, but if we have that information, at least we know what we're doing.
And I just want to say, because I know I've been on this council for a while, and sometimes that's a challenge, because, you know, we do want to get the best value, but sometimes the council will say, wait a minute. That's not the best...the lowest price. So I think for the staff and all that, it's one of those challenges you always have. It's like, I don't know if they want the lowest bid or the best bid, because there's a lot of things that we've discussed here where I thought was better value, but people were looking for a better price. So it's one of those things you have to always keep in mind.
That's true. Just a concern. And again, I'm a...but if you're thinking about capital improvement projects, we choose the lowest bidder, and then in a couple of weeks, we have about 200 or 300 change orders. So why not just choose the best bidder from the beginning, and we can cut down on all of that?
Yep. Mrs. King?
Okay, so I'll take your first question first. And we actually were able to achieve savings by eliminating our lease agreement with the building that is next door here. We are in the process right now of moving into owned city space, so that eliminated and produced more than the amount of savings that would be required to cover this. So, it was an offset without affecting our operations at all. And in fact, this will improve our operations because it'll be a more reliable piece of equipment and easier for the staff to work with. The second question was, I've forgotten it.
What would happen if owned?
Oh, that's right. We will, we will sell it. We will try to sell it either, it'll miss this surplus auction because it is currently in use, but we will attempt to sell it through some auction, either website or service.
Mr. Oakery.
Yeah, this is for the City Manager. Mr. Olson, this lease is for like five years, right, for printing? And my question is, to the extent that is possible and where we are right now, when are we going to get to a paperless operation across the organization? We, with the, mommy dears hate clothes hangers, I hate paper. So, I just don't know where are we going to go, because I mean, to do one presentation, what is it, a couple of boxes of paper? That's cost.
Budget.
But I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I'm envisioning with technology, the use of technology, to download it and to have the very exact thing, but it's electronic. Where are we as an organization to, within that five years? I don't know if we'll be, you know, just getting out of the starting blocks or where will we be in five years?
You know, that is an excellent question and it's one that I haven't really processed thoroughly yet. I can tell you that we're, we're moving more paperless by putting in a new website that's going to be more capable of doing electronic business, so we'll have less paper receipts and less paper everything if we can get people doing business with us through, through the internet. And in the budget that you approved this evening, we have, we have resources to begin doing that piece of it. We need, we do have some existing capability for electronic records management and we are not fully utilizing what we have. So, one of the things I hope to do during the next year is ramp up a more robust electronic records management system that will help in what you're talking about. I think probably once we start using what we have to its full capability, we're going to find out it's not good enough for us and we'll have to probably upgrade it to do everything we want it to do. So, those are a couple of steps that we're already working on and I think we need, I think we need to let those two efforts mature before we take next steps. But, so that's kind of where we're at. I don't think we're going to have to wait five years. We have the ability to start moving ahead, although I think, I think for people like yourself who tend to think in terms of electronic service, it's probably going to look like baby steps for a couple of years.
And the other, one other thing that I did have as far as the bidding process, policy procedure, what does our policy dictate? Do we get the best product or do we get the lowest price?
Again, I don't know the exact answer to that. I think, I do know that in many cases, the state law requires us to take low price. However, I was talking with, I was talking with some business people today who want to look at that issue further and I need to examine it. I need to know if we have an existing local business preference ordinance and if we do, is it good? And if we don't, should we have one? And I need to look at that whole, whole line and I really haven't touched it yet.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo what Councilman Oakery just said. When we came on the council a couple of years ago, they were delivering our council packets to us. Each Friday, we got the, a city worker came to our house, dropped off the packet for us and this big, sometimes two packets, that big.
I like this one right here.
And so, for those of us on the council, we can say, wow, look how far we've came with that. We're now, we use I legislate to do it. And that, that's great. I echo the sentiment that we need to continue that effort and probably double the effort up, because if we can do that in eighteen months, think what we can do in another eighteen months by doing it. It's all about revenue, expenses, and how we can drop those expenses to meet that revenue is critical to us. And, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Harris.
My question is, as far as printers now, it sounds like we own them. I mean, I'm assuming we own them, the printers that we have now? Do we own them?
Yes, yes, sir. Well, we have a number of different printers. So, we have very large copy machines that are leased. They're under an agreement to provide ink and service and things. The presses we own.
Okay, the presses to be owned, okay.
There are two. There's a, there's a single color press and then there's the two-color press.
Okay. How long, how long have we had those?
The two-color press was purchased in nineteen ninety-nine.
Okay.
And with an expected lifespan of fifteen years.
Okay. Okay, um, so did it basically, I mean, how long did it go before it actually started having like significant issues where we had to restart putting more money into it than we wanted to?
Right. So, in the last, I would say, three years, it has become increasingly unserviceable. So, this year alone, we've had thirty-two times that the press has gone down and when it goes down, it is three to five days in duration. And so far this year, we've spent $4,000 repairing it. Now, I wanted to just tell you kind of what it's really responsible for. It prints all the water bills every month.
Okay.
So, it does all of those forms. It creates the forms that police, the triplicate forms that police have to hand out to the public. So, it's a pretty essential service internally.
So, we pretty much got our life, we pretty much almost got the lifespan out of it?
Yes, absolutely. I feel like we've squeezed every last, every last drop of ink out of it.
Okay. And let's see, I know with the, with the new presses here, that we wanted to do a sixty month lease. What, is there, I mean, is there, I guess, was the reason we switched to a lease instead of, you know, I guess, buying another one that could possibly last another fifteen years? So, I see it's eighty-three thousand, I think it was?
Yes, sir.
For the entire lease? And I guess I was just thinking in my mind, would it be better to do the lease or hopefully buy a machine that can last another fourteen, thirteen, fifteen years?
So, it's a lease to own, so we will own it at the end of five years and it has an expected lifespan of about fifteen years also.
Okay, okay, that sounds good. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Everybody good? I was going to ask you, you get the City Council business cards. Does the press do that?
Yes, sir.
Do you guys recycle?
Oh, yes, we recycle.
I had a business card, it had the mayor in front and some kind of document in the back. It wasn't important. I said, I'm going to have that.
Bring that to me.
And I said, I think we recycle here, so that's a good thing.
I didn't know we were recycling quite like that. That must have been.
That was on the back of my business card.
Quality control.
There you go. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hankel.
All right, RS seventeen one oh three, consider memorandum resolution authorizing an agreement with ESO Solutions for the Fire Department Emergency Medical Service Patient Care Report Software. Chief Brink, welcome.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, City Manager. ESO Solutions for EMS reporting to local hospitals. ESO software is a program to help transfer electronically data between the ambulance report, ambulance reports and clipboards to the hospitals. This is a change in software from Zoll, which is the current software we use, to ESO Solutions. We have a compatibility issue with the Zoll software. It's taking us a long time to transfer data over. Our reporting time between calls at hospitals is longer. It hasn't really been user-friendly and it's not transferring patient demographic insurance information with the hospitals the way that it should. Central Texas Regional Advisory Council, CTRAC, has recommended the use of ESO Solutions and most of the EMS service providers in central Texas have already switched. An example of those is Harker Heights, Copper's Cove, Belton, Corel Memorial. Alternatives is to continue to use Zoll as we are now. Switching to ESO Solutions saves about $5,319 a year in subscription fees. Switching is the preferred alternative and it will save that money and it will also improve the information transfer of demographic data and it will also cut down on the time at the hospitals for our ambulances. It conforms to city policy, Appendix G, which is sole source. The financial impact is a one-time cost that's budgeted by the Fire Department of $13,980 and a monthly subscription fee of $3,156.75 for an annualized fee of $37,875. The total cost is $51,855 and staff recommends that council authorize switching to the ESO Solutions.
Any questions for the chief? Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is really the data once that you're placed into the emergency vehicle, now they're data transferring your insurance, your financial data, things of that nature, not your medical condition.
It's for billing purposes mainly.
Right.
But it transfers data to the hospitals. I do not know the specifics of the information that's being transferred through ESO. All of the local providers use the same demographic data for transferring information to the hospitals. I can tell you that by doing this, and it's been brought to my attention by all of our EMS people, that if we do this, it will cut down on the amount of time we spend at the hospitals by probably twenty-five minutes, which will virtually add another ambulance to the street. So, that's another advantage of doing this.
As a frequent miler user of your emergency vehicles, on six occasions, y'all have done, I would love to see something like this happen, because each and every time, there's always a question comes back toward the financial data that was transferred, transferred. And it's not the, it has never been the fault of the EMS personnel. It's been a fault with compatibility of softwares and it not just that, it's Darnall and Scott and Wake. So, I think this is an excellent initiative, plus it saves us money.
Yes, it does save money.
Thank you.
You get your seventh one for free, so. Anybody else?
We like things that cost less money.
All right, moving on. RS seventeen dash one oh four, consider memorandum authorizing the replacement of roofs at fire station number three, fire station number seven, and central fire station. Chief Brink.
So, for a very long time now, we've been needing to replace roofs for fire stations three, seven, and central fire station. Station three was built in nineteen eighty-eight. Station seven was built in ninety-nine. Central station was built in nineteen seventy-six. These roofs have been patched multiple times. The last rain, not the last rainy day, but the one before that, I went out to station three just to see how bad it was and they had probably twelve pans sitting in various locations inside the station catching water. And that's a mold concern as well. Some of the ceiling tiles had fallen down and we have to replace those almost every time that we have water dripping. Also, station seven has actually already had a mold abatement issue back in two thousand five and it's still leaking like it was back then. Our city staff has really gone as far as they possibly can at trying to repair these things. They've been up on the roof multiple times. Our Building Repairs Division within the city's done that. And of course, one mold abatement can cost as much as probably replacing all three of these roofs. The alternatives are to continue patching the roofs as we have been for a very long time or to replace the roofs. Once we replace the roofs and we know the mold's going to be prevented, we can begin repairing some of the interior damage, replacing the tiles, do interior painting. And there's even some flooring damage and some of them, we can work on that as well. It does conform to city policy through the interlocking purchasing systems, tips, cooperative. The total cost for all three roofs is $162,538. It's FD budgeted. It's a one-time expenditure. We recommend, staff recommends that council authorize the replacement of the roofs for fire stations three, seven, and central.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Fleming.
I have to speak frankly. Fire stations should never have gone this long with leaking and everything on a roof. How in the world would this city allow that to happen all these many years? You guys are there to protect the city, to help us out, but yet they let you guys consider having all that leaking and buckets and everything? That is horrible. I can't believe that this went on those many years, sir.
Well, I know, I know the city repair department actually tried to do the best they could to help us out and I don't know the financial, the specific financial issues, but.
It's really unacceptable because you guys are there to help us out and to get up, you could have tripped over the buckets or anything in water. This has been going on since when, nineteen ninety-nine?
Well, not that long, but the leaks have gotten worse over time.
The mold will hurt you. Mold is dangerous. And I can't believe that they didn't put this in the budget last year, a year before. I can't believe this, sir, and I have to speak frankly. I think that's horrible.
All right. Mrs. King.
Mrs. Fleming's hit on what I was talking about. You know, this is a hazard. Oh, yes, it's a safety hazard. And one thing I want to say, the fire department, you don't even complain.
I, I was going to be talking to firefighters and they just are really eager to go.
And girls, so he said, don't hit the girls.
Yeah, for sure. We have good people. And we have good people working for the Building Repair Department too as well, yes.
Hey, chief, do they have any type of insurance claim? I know we have had many numerous hail damage out here, lots of roofs been replaced. Have we ever, does that qualify for any of that?
I don't know the answer to that. I think these roofs may be old enough that we, that they probably wouldn't qualify, but I really don't know the specifics.
Because if it, if it was in one of those hail damage instances, a lot of those, I mean, are claimed as long as it hasn't been replaced, it could be, I don't know, two or three years back.
I think once we get our risk management program working the way it should, we might be able to have a positive answer to that question.
Yeah. Because we've gotten a lot of hail damage here and I bet you, some of that would be covered, so. Anybody else? All right, chief, you were the last one here, so with that, council, that was the last item, so.
Mayor, mayor.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Wait up, wait up, wait up. I'm sorry, I got, I jumped the gun. I got to go back to the front, so before we go, Mr. Olson.
I might be a little bit confused on this, but we just reviewed the agenda for the twenty-sixth of September. I think there's going to be another item on there, which is the quarterly performance review for your city manager. So, that's not, it's not showing here, but don't be surprised when you see the actual agenda. There'll be an executive session for that review.
And that's for the workshop or for the council meeting?
I'm sorry?
Is that for the, for next week's?
It'll be.
Special, special, we're going to do a special work.
We'll do a special, we'll do a special closed meeting after this city council meeting on the twenty-sixth for the, for the performance review.
All right. And then, I almost forget, we still got one more item and this is RQ seventeen dash zero zero six, future agenda items request, and that is discuss city council early meeting times. I think this got to be Mr. Harris, right? That's you.
Actually, actually, it was. I didn't, I didn't send in a request to discuss it. I just, it was pretty much just of a directive. I didn't send it in for discussion.
Oh.
I just made the statement about, you know.
Okay, well, then, we're good.
Yeah, we're good.
All right. So, now, motion to adjourn? We need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Kil.
Second.
Where? Thought I did that.
I thought so, too.
See, I got confused, because that's, that's the one I started with and that's why you guys skipped, made me skip this one over here. All right, that's why, I'm sorry, go ahead. We still got one more item and I thought, I read that one, see? We still got one more item and I thought, I read that one, see?
Really fast. All right.
All right, the RS 17-101, which I read before, but.
I, I'm sorry, there were, it was probably in regards to the quarterly investment report.
Yeah.
That's, that's what Ms. Anderson did.
That's what that was.
Okay. Then I should've came up then instead of Ms. Anderson. So, uh, this is the quarterly, uh, financial review for the third quarter of the fiscal year. And it just provides a city council with a look at where the major operating funds are at this point. First, take a look at the general fund. When, when you look at the slide, the green is revenue and the blue is expense. The solid colors are the actual activity and the stripes show the budget for the, uh, revenue and expense. The, uh, dark blue dashes that you see is our budget progress markers. And it just shows where 75% of, of the year, since this is, uh, the third quarter review, where you would anticipate we would be. So on, on the revenue side, um, we're at 81% of the budget. And, uh, we've, we've collected over 100% of the property tax that we've budgeted. We, we only budget 98%. That's a, our historical collection amount. And, um, and we've collected almost 99% this year. Uh, sales tax on the year are up 3% or $500,000. And as you can, and compared to last year, total revenues are up about 5%. Onto expenses, uh, on the expense side, we're currently at about 70%. Um, a, a lot of this is due to the, um, cost savings that were identified by city council and staff after the budget was adopted to, to not, um, draw down the general fund by the 1.4 million that, that was budgeted. And overall expenses are down 1.1 million compared to last fiscal year. On the water and sewer fund, the revenues are at 72% of budget at 29 million. Water sales are up about a half of a percent and sewer sales are up a little less than a percent. Overall revenues are up 1% or $287,000. And we, we have 1,207 more water accounts than what we had at this same time last year. On to expenses, we're at 53% of our budget with expenses at 22.2 million. The major reason, reason for this is the timing of the enterprise debt service payments, debt service payments for the enterprise funds. The principal portion is made in August. So this, this June report does not include that. And the debt service payment for the water sewer fund is 6.2 million dollars. So you would see that that would get us closer to the, where we would be at this point in the fiscal year. Overall expenses for water and sewer fund are down 10% compared to, uh, last fiscal year. The solid waste fund revenues are at 78% of budget or 14.2 million. Residential revenue is up 4% or $300,000. And com, commercial revenue is up 5% or $219,000. Overall for the fund, revenues are up 4% compared to last fiscal year. The, we're at 70% of our budget on the expense side or 12.3 million dollars. The main reason for the gap, uh, between where we're at and 75%, again, is the debt service payment for the enterprise fund of their, a debt service payment that would be made of $560,000. Drainage fund revenues are at 76% of budget at 3.1 million. Our residential fees are up 2.5% or $62,000. And commercial fees are up a little over 1% or, um, $5,700. Overall, fund revenues are up 2.5% compared to last fiscal year or $74,000. The expenses are at 54% of budget currently through June, uh, $2.3 million. There is a remaining debt service payment in the amount of $455,000. And overall expenses in the drainage fund are up 2.5% or $58,000 compared to last fiscal year. At the Clean Forehood Regional Airport, we are at 70% of the revenue budget with total revenues of $2.3 million. Operational revenues for the fund are up 5% compared to last year or $91,000. Implantments are down just a little less than 1%. Total implantments through June were $99,500. Currently at 55% of the expense budget or $2.2 million. And, um, the primary reason for the gap is there's a grant-funded project. It's the AIP grant for the airport master plan that still has, um, over $400,000 remaining on it. The, the last fund is the Skylark Field Fund and we are at 65% of the budget on the revenue side at $314,000. Fuel sales are up at Skylark Field, 12%, which is $18,000. And over, overall revenues are up 17% or $46,000. Expenses are at 59% of the budget at $324,000. And expenses are also up 15% and it is related to the cost of goods sold because we're, we're selling more fuel. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Mr. Gilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it possible that the council receive your, your verbiage? It's difficult to keep count of all that figures up then.
All, all the, all the figures I shared? Sure, I, I can put it together in a, in a document and send it to the city manager's office.
The word briefing that goes along with each slide.
And they got a recording too.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Oakley.
That's to go along with Mr., was Mr. Gilpatrick saying, at least with the, like with the revenues? I mean, I, I'm, oh, look at Skylark Field, it's 3, 314, 483. I don't see the, how, you know, the, the math right there, the percentage. It maybe just put, maybe the percentage on the, on the bars itself might say where we are. Cause it says 75% over here, but I'm looking over here to the left. I don't know what percentage that is of this 483 million.
It helps us to know if we're, uh, 2% up down from last, last year of this, this.
Okay.
Difference, yeah, right?
But the colors are great. I like the colors.
All right, anyone else? Okay, Mrs. King. All right. Motion by Mrs. King, second by Mrs. Fleming to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. We are adjourned, thank you.